Sutter County Board of Supervisors to order. Procedure for public comment, members of the public to be allowed to address the board during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak about any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of the agenda item which you about to speak and present it to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item. If you wish to speak under public comment, please note that on the speaker card when a matter is announced, please oppose the lectern in the back after being recognized by the chair. Okay, roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Conant.
Present. We will now stand for the invocation led by Dan Galligan and Legacy Baptist Church. And Ken, Sir Ra will do the invocation, pledge allegiance, please. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for today, Lord. Thank you for your goodness and love for us. Thank you for your protection. Praise you to bless this meeting this afternoon, that you would guide each and every person here. Lord, that it would be orderly, that it would be godly. Lord, I pray you bless our first responders. Thank you for their service, their faithfulness. Bless their families, keep them safe. And Lord, as they serve you, I pray that you would just bless this city and this county, Lord, and all that you've done in many, many years. I pray that you continue to bless it as we move forward, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for with it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two presentations.
Can Zachary Hamel, Emergency Operations Manager, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing September 2024 as National Preparedness Month?
National Preparedness Month, September 2024. National Preparedness Month is a national effort held each September to highlight the importance of emergency preparedness, such as a major disaster or flood, wildfire, earthquake, public health crisis, or terrorism which could cause devastating loss of life and property and cost damage to the environment. Sutter County is committed to making preparedness education a priority. Multiple resources are available to citizens to help ensure preparedness include online tools. Be Prepared Sutter County provides information to the community on hazard to the Sutter County trip or personal preparedness and steps taken during, before, and during, and after disaster. Code RED allows people to sign up for notification of a disaster in their area. Zone Haven provides a visual representation where the residents can learn about evaluating and knowledge that they know that they live and work, learn to play in. Real government, a national campaign designed to educate and empower Americans to prepare for the response to emergencies, including natural and man-made disaster. Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Preparedness Month in Sutter County and call for upon the community members to take steps to prepare for emergency at home, work, or school to support the effort to ensure residents are prepared for unforeseen disasters. Zach?
It is a mouthful. So 2024, the focus every year FEMA comes up with a theme, and this year's theme is Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islander communities. And we have those different communities within our community here. Following the last four years where they focused on Latino, Black, African-American, and last year being older adults. Our threat landscape is constantly changing and evolving and worsening, so we need to take important steps to build our resiliency here in Sutter County to make sure that we can bounce back from a disaster quicker. One of the recent studies FEMA conducted was less than forty percent of Asian-Americans believe that preparing helps. So we really need to change that attitude. Less than forty percent, that's kind of a concerning number. We really need to make sure that we are preparing for disaster because it does help with that resiliency. We need to check on our neighbors. We need to make sure that they're okay. Since we are such a flood-prone community and we're going into flood season, hopefully sooner than later get out of fire season at least. We never want to walk or drive through flooded streets. We always want to turn around and don't drown. That's a big campaign of ours. And then, as you mentioned in your proclamation, going to bepreparedsutter.org, you can learn all about preparing for disasters, how to help respond during disasters, and then recovering after a disaster. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that on our website, you can learn more about Zone Haven, sign up for Code RED. And then lastly, something new this year is we have five flood and evacuation brochures that are broken out per basin, so Meridian, Robbins, Nicholas. So we have all, all the basins have their own preparedness brochure, so please, please check that out. Thank you.
Can Ken Srav, Director of General Services and the Sutter County Information Technology Department, please join the board up front for recognition of their response to the worldwide tech outage on July 18th, 2024?
The whole team's here. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. Ken Srav and IT team, recognition. Late on the night of Thursday, July 18th, computers around the world running Microsoft Windows operating systems crashed, resulting in the world's largest tech outage. A cybersecurity firm, a global distribution software update unintentionally shut down the IT systems of customers, which included airlines, medical facilities, TV stations, financial institutions, nine-to-one dispatch centers, and the systems of state and local governments, including ours. The Information Technology Division of Sutter County General Services Department responded immediately overnight. Shortly after 3:00 AM Friday, General Services Director Ken Srav reported that the staff was bringing critical systems and emergency services back online before the beginning of the Friday morning workday. During the evening, he reported the IT team spent many as twenty hours manually recovering, impacting county computers. The Board of Supervisors would like to recognize and commend the staff of the IT Division not only for the swift mobilization and restoration of critical public safety to our community functions during the worldwide outage, but for the competence, efficiency, and dedication you show every day in the workplace. Thank you. Ken?
Just first of all, I'd like to thank the board for the recognition. It's truly an honor, and thank you to the CEO's office as well. You know, cybersecurity is a top priority for us, and it's something that the team has to deal with constantly. It's never-ending. It's twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. And, you know, really, our best defense against all this is this team that you're seeing in front of you, standing here. You know, the core of this team has been together between fifteen to twenty years, so it's not something you can build overnight. But it is the reason why they work so well together and also why they were able to respond to the incident so quickly. So, you know, we, as a county agency, are very fortunate to have these people, these professionals, working here for us. It's something that every other agency would love to have. So really, the credit goes to all of these people that you see right here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I'd just like to say, you have an offensive team. You guys are proactive in trying to find the problem before they hit us, and this last outage really demonstrated that ability of your team. Thank you, guys. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, I'd like to thank and acknowledge the entire IT team. I know they all couldn't be here, but I appreciate those that could. I was just saying to, I think, Supervisor Flores yesterday, that I would put our IT staff up against any government in the North State. I mean, we're, we're so fortunate to have them. They make things happen, and they're a small team. Like, like many of our departments in Sutter County, they're very lean when you compare regional counties as well. And I think the vision that the team has in convincing us to have an information security officer a few years ago, that was a new position, but someone who's been, Michael, who's been with the county for a long time. But I know many of the folks have been, and even the new staff have really just stepped up and made things happen. So I just wanted to say how much we appreciate you all, and I think Sarah would like to say a few things as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So with our five hundred and seventy-five employees, we just really could not have gotten through that without you. I actually was talking to Ken at one-thirty in the morning on the night of the incident and wanted to be sure that our twenty-four-hour staff at our nineteen-sixty-five Live Oak Campus were safe. We didn't really know the extent of what was going on, and so just, I really wanted to recognize, you know, you all were up all hours of that night. You responded out to the psychiatric health facility and to our crisis team, and you provided that customer service in the middle of the night. It was a world-class response. You touched about two-hundred-and-ninety-five of HHS machines individually. It was incredible, and I just want to thank you so much on behalf of your colleagues.
Okay, public comment, members of the public to be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public there within the subject matter. Jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, state law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Chairman, we have three speaker cards. The first public speaker is Tina Hessong.
It's election season, and things are heating up across the country. Citizens of Georgia have declared a state of emergency in their election system. A presidential coup took place before the DNC convention to change the Democratic candidate, the assassination attempt of a former president and current candidate, and Mark Zuckerberg has admitted and regrets that the Biden-Harris regime pressured him to censor millions of Americans in the lead-up to the 2020 election. These are just a few of the recent examples that indicate how crucial the election is and the lengths that will be taken to ensure a certain outcome. Yet I still wonder, how can anyone consider the election industrial complex voting system to be secure when nearly every other industry is faced with cybersecurity issues? It's a farce to think otherwise. Cyber attacks are happening everywhere, the Federal Reserve, crowd strike, Social Security, the Seattle Airport, and apparently even here in Sutter County. And the Musk and Trump interview are just a few recent examples. If two of the most influential businessmen with unlimited resources struggle against cyber attacks, why would anyone think that the election industrial complex is the only sector to be secure? CSIS has reported thirty-six significant cyber attacks this year, and they have made a joint PSA with the FBI warning of potential DDoS attacks during the 2024 election cycle. Hello, that is called election interference through a secure voting system, and they are warning you about it in advance. Why? Because the election system is connected to the internet and is using algorithms to fractionate votes to change the outcomes of elections. The indisputable evidence presented to the Ohio Secretary of State by Dr. Jerome Corsi and Paquette of the secret algorithms that are used in the 2020 election in several states brings forward a criminal scheme to facilitate mail-in voter fraud. The FBI is committed to investigate the use of algorithms in elections and solve the problem. What does that mean? It means that your hands are dirty and you were part of the fraud. NCS, New California State, will prove the reality of these algorithms by presenting your numbers to you publicly at the next meeting. The 2020 true numbers have been reported to other supervisors showing their elections were lost and they were not elected by the people. You must get in front of this issue and correct it for this coming election by not using the electronic machines and going back to one-day, hand-counted elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, South Steepest Street, Walton, Hyde Park. Here, thank Sheriff for his service. Scott Small, thank you for your service. The Who Brought Marine, the Marine, thank you for your service. Good job, thank you for your service, Zachary Hamel, the Hamilton, man. Zachary Hamel, Earl of Wars Day. Thank you to the new rookie sheriff here, thank you for your service, too. Bill, the Bill, the Bill, thank you for your service, Bill. Professor, Professor Steve, thank you for your service. Scott, 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 big-time money bar lawyer, man, for real. Thank you for your service, Sarah Harrioz. Sarah Harrioz helped my section out. I appreciate her, Sarah. And thank you for your service, Star Wars guy, the farmer, and Carm Baines, thank you for your service, Carm Baines, the Carm Baines guy. Thank you for your service, Jamie. And thank you for your service, Stephanie, and Gina. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tony. Next speaker?
Our last public speaker is Tyson Earhart.
Hello. Let me begin by noting that I find the Sutter County's online meeting calendar to be a very nice resource. Agendas, agenda packets, minutes, meeting video, et cetera, easily accessed, and it is worth noting publicly. At the August twenty-first Planning Commission meeting, the large lot tentative subdivision map and small lot subdivision maps for Lakeside and Sutter Point were approved by the commission. This approval is in contradiction to the 2009 Development Agreement between Sutter County and South Sutter LLC. It continues to baffle me why Sutter County will not abide by the terms of the Development Agreement. No tentative maps until a developer signs a supplemental mitigation agreement with the school districts. It doesn't say no tentative map unless the county really needs a sewer line extension. It doesn't say no tentative maps unless the developers have already spent tens of millions of dollars and need this thing to move forward. If the terms of the agreement were so bad, why did the county and the developer sign? The same developers now asking for tentative maps worked on the original agreement, and now, twenty years later, their stance is the terms of the agreement are not legal? And people wonder why no one trusts developers. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was noted by a commissioner, and I'm course paraphrasing, that this project is too important to the community to be held up. Additionally, they said there's still time to come to an agreement after this approval. That is not what the agreement stipulated. This is the very reason why this needs to be enforced. I am a lifelong South Sutter County resident. I cannot be more disappointed in how the county, excuse me, has handled this situation. The original mitigation agreement needs to be enforced, or we risk bankrupting two school districts. Once again, big money gets their way at the expense of the little guy and the students that the little guy educates. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyson. Okay, moving on. Consent calendar, consent calendar groups together those items of interest which are considered non-controversial or which prior policy direction have been given to staff and require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that the matter may be adopted in one total motion. However, the board may as option or upon the request of a member of the public, consider any manner separately. Do we have any speaker cards on the consent calendar? No. Okay. We, footnote here, we will have to pull items four and fifteen because they both require a four-fifth vote, and so it would be minus items one through twenty-one, minus four and fifteen.
To the chair?
Yeah.
Move approval of consent, less items four and fifteen.
Carm?
Second.
We have a motion of second?
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-two. We will open, hang on one second, let me go to the right page. We'll open the Water Works District One meeting and adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we will let the roll call stand. And Bill, this also requires a four-fifth vote. We can't do this item either, so do we, do we actually start the meeting, or how do we proceed with that?
You would start the meeting, indicate that we don't have four members present, and then?
Okay. So I guess we go start, do the public comment, members of the public to be allowed to address the board. Water District One, Board of Directors on items of interest to the public there within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Appearance item, and this is, I guess, where we will actually close the meeting, correct? So since we don't have a quorum, and we'll close the meeting, and we'll go to the adjourn, the Water Works One, go to the regular board meeting, let the roll call stand, and Neil Hay, yours is the first item up.
Introduction of an ordinance establishing a forty mile-per-hour speed limit on Berry Road in Rio Oso. Waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and continue the item to the meeting of September tenth, 2024, for adoption.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Thanks for this opportunity to be before you today. So in your staff report, our department received a request to perform a traffic study on a section of Berry Road. This is not the section off of Ninety-Nine at the south end of, I'll say, view of the city proper, but this is actually down in Rio Oso area, west of Highway Seventy, State Route Seventy. I believe we might have an exhibit in the, or some documents in the staff report that I can scroll through. So what happens is staff went out, studied the number of pedestrians, the number of vehicles, and the speeds of the automobiles traversing the roadway. The, just to give you some background, the traffic volume, well, the cars were averaging about thirty-eight and a half miles an hour, and we had a number of, let's say, a couple hundred cars per day. Sorry. So the current speed limits, non-posted fifty-five, we're recommending a speed limit of forty miles per hour. We would, it's essentially a dead-end road, but the residents had concerns about cars speeding down that area, and they have both animals, dogs, cats, and sometimes there are children that are playing in the street. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? No? Any speaker cards? No. I guess we need a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second. A motion of second, roll call?
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. And you'll read it.
An ordinance of the County of Sutter amending the Sutter County Ordinance Code by adding to Section eleven-hundred dash one-hundred relating to the prima facie speed limits.
Okay. Neil?
Thank you, Neil, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Approval of an independent contractor agreement with Woodard and Coran in an amount not to exceed two million, six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars to accomplish a portion of the scope of work for the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act implementation grant benefiting the Sutter Subbasin. Waive the requirement for a request for proposals for consultant selection under the provisions of Sutter County Ordinance Code sixteen-fifty, and authorization for the Director of Development Services to execute and administer all contract documents.
And I'm going to ask our Principal Engineer, Guadalupe Rivera, to come and speak on this matter and present it to you, since he's been managing our Sigma program for quite a number of years. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and members of the board, Guadalupe Rivera, Principal Engineer with the Development Services Department. The item before you is regarding the work associated with compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, also known as Sigma. There are three sub-basins within the county, a small portion of the Butte Subbasin, all of the Sutter Subbasin, and about twenty-five percent of the North American Subbasin. Specifically regarding the Sutter Subbasin, the GSP was adopted by the board in January twenty-twenty-two, and in October of twenty-twenty-three, we were notified that DWR had approved the GSP for Marsha Basin, and it was one of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven GSPs that were approved, which is about sixty-six of the plans were approved. So we were very proud of the fact that we were one of sixty-six percent of the approved GSPs. In two thousand and twenty-two, grant funding was made available for a GSP implementation. DWR received eighty-two applications requesting over seven-hundred-and-eighty million dollars in funding. However, only thirty-one of those applications were recommended for funding with a total of one-hundred-and-eighty-seven million dollars. The application for the Subbasin, for the Sutter Subbasin, was one of those thirty-one applications receiving eight-point-five-three million in grant funds. This grant fund will fund approximately, will fund five components, which are shown on the screen before you. The grant administration, the annual reporting and model updates, monitoring and data gap improvements, the GSP financing plan, and Butte Water District Irrigation System improvements. Although it is one of the lowest-cost components of the five, the GSP financing plan will be the critical, will be critical for the future of the county's general fund. This financing plan will develop how to ultimately fund the costs needed to comply with this legislation that does not have an end in sight. As potential scenarios for assessments are for the end users of groundwater are developed, we will come back to the board with updates for that. The engineering firm Woodard and Kern have been instrumental in the GSP development and grant applications, and to keep the work progressing at a good pace to complete on time, the department is recommending that a contract be awarded to Woodard and Kern as they were previously selected through an RFP process, as noted in the GSP. Grant funds are expected to be expended by the end of March twenty-twenty-six, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Guadalupe. Any speaker cards? No speaker cards? Any question from the board? Good question?
I have a, to the chair. I have a question. Did, if you look down in the valley, you look at Madera and those folks that aren't allowed, that are in a white zone and they can't farm anymore, and where's this, where are you taking Sutter County with? I mean, it looks nice to get a grant for, you know, two and a half million dollars, but where, how are you positioning your farmers for the future?
So right now, we currently have, our groundwater conditions are in a much better situation than most of the Central Valley, and so that is something that we are keeping an eye on and needing to focus and monitor. And part of our GSP plan is to ensure that we... And part of our GSP plan is to ensure that we don't get to a point that we are in the same situation as that Central Valley. And so within the GSP, there are thresholds that should our groundwater conditions cross those thresholds, that would require management actions to prevent us from getting into a situation similar to the Central Valley and to ensure that we have groundwater for future use.
Guadalupe, thank you for the report. I think it's fair to say that Sutter County truly blessed to have abundant, not abundant, but a, a good resource of, of, of water in the valley that, one of the better places to be, I guess. And we were able to get our Sigma compliance up fairly easily. I, I, well, that might be overstating, but at least it was doable.
Yeah, our consultant did a great job and our partnering agencies that work with us, like the City of Yuba City, City of Live Oak, some of the reclamation districts and other folks that are part of the, that are also GSAs, they worked hard on working together and ensuring that we developed a good groundwater sustainability plan.
And I, I think a lot of that goes that we have a lot of conjunctive use of water districts, meaning you use well water and surface water in cooperation with each other. And that ends up making a much more healthy aquifer. And that's one of the reasons why we're able to do that. Thank you, Guadalupe. Thank you for the report. We need a motion.
To the chair?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Okay, next is item number 25. Veronica Baumgartner, Human Resource Director, will present item number 25.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Sutter County Deputy Sheriff's Association for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. Extend a 4% base salary increase for the class titles of Communication Manager and Correctional Lieutenant. Extend a 2% base salary increase for the class titles of Administrative and Finance Manager Law and Chief Welfare Investigator. And extend educational incentive pay to, pay changes to the class titles of Communications Manager, Correctional Lieutenant, Administrative and Finance Manager, Law and Chief Welfare Investigator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Members of the Board, Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director. As you know, the existing agreement between the county and the Deputy Sheriff's Association, the DSA, is, or expired on June 30th, 2024. The county and the association has been actively in negotiations since early April, and we are happy to announce we have reached tentative agreement. And this contract was ratified on August 2nd by the members of the DSA. Just to highlight a few areas of the agreement. A 2% base wage increase effective August 24th, so this pay period. And concurrently, a two-point, or sorry, 4.2% equity adjustment for the class titles of Secretary Law and a 6.5 equity adjustment to the class title of Welfare Investigator 1.2. This also includes a 2% base wage increase effective July of 2025. And another area of this agreement was converting the educational incentive pay from a flat rate, which it was previously, to a percentage-based rate, a 2.5 base for post-intermediate and/or an AA or an AS degree, and another 2.5 for a post-advanced or a bachelor's in arts or science. And this is in line with all other units in the county, so it was nice to make them from a flat pay rate to that percentage rate to be more equitable across the board. We also added three paid holidays just to those employees who don't receive a holiday bank, so those employees that are non-safety employees in the DSA, which is less than 10 employees. So we were able to get them on the same track with the rest of the county as well. As you know, the terms and conditions of this agreement are consistent, consistent with the authority that your board had given us throughout the last couple of months. And the cost of the base wage increase and equity adjustments is approximately $188,000 for fiscal year 2425 and $352,000 for fiscal year 2526. The Sheriff's Department and Health and Human Services, who also has employees in this unit, will absorb these increased costs with their existing budget authority that's already been given in 2425. Therefore, no additional budget authority will be needed for 202425 as this is already provided in their budgets or they will find the funding for that. I did want to say that I, you know, appreciate the team that are, I appreciate our team, the county's team, which was made up the CIO's office and some of HR and the undersheriff. And I appreciate your guys' guidance as well. And, and I also appreciate the association's team that spent a lot of time, I know they put in a lot of hours and a lot of time, you know, trying to work and, and help their, their members in their department. So I appreciate their help and all of us coming together. So any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any speaker cards? Question from the board?
To the chair, just move approval of the recommended action.
Motion? Second?
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Okay, moving on, item number 26, Steve Smith, County Administrator, present item 26, approval of the board response to the 2023-2024 Grand Jury Final Report. Steve, Flores, yours.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Yes, this is the annual response to the annual Sutter County Grand Jury Final Report. First of all, I want to thank the grand jury members for their dedication, service on the grand jury. It's up to 19 citizens of the county to investigate a number of matters from, related to county government, to city government, and special districts and schools. They put in a lot of time and hard work, so appreciate that. Their report had five reports within it. One dealing with their meeting room, one the county jail, another on tri-county rehabilitation or the Juvenile Hall, one on the supervisor salaries, and one on voter integrity within the county. I'll briefly go over some of these findings and reports, and the, the full response can be found on our website. So for the grand jury room accessibility, the grand jury had findings that there are some still non-compliant ADA issues. So we're looking, and we, we agreed with that and are looking to fix that as soon as possible. Our official response was, this recommendation has not yet been implemented. However, county staff are already pursuing a quote on a ramp for access to the outside entrance to the county grand jury meeting room. Construction is expected to be completed by January 31st. Also, there is an issue with the lighting that we have not yet implemented but will be by November 3rd, 2024. On the jail tour, their findings were related to there were some potential contraband drop-off locations, some structural damage, ineffective cooling system, and difficulty in hiring and retaining staff. So our response in part is that we have had recent increases in pay, so this recommendation has been implemented in that recent pay increases have been approved, and the Board of Supervisors is currently in negotiations with the Sutter County Deputy Sheriff's Association, which was just approved today. So we have a, overall, we couldn't find any of the structural damage, nor could the sheriff nor general services staff. So we're trying to clear that issue up. And then we just put in there that it hasn't been implemented as we can't find the damage that they were referring to. And then regarding HVAC, this recommendation will not be implemented because it is not reasonable. The cost of a new HVAC system has yet to be determined, however, it will likely exceed $4 million. Once the cost is determined, the county will create a plan to fund the needed improvements. It was just not reasonable because of the timeline for implementing that. And, but we're already in the process. The the Juvenile Hall issues were resolved before the, this report was published. It was just about the length of time that it was taking for the completion of the facility. That, much of that was on the state. Yuba County has actually done a great job managing that project. It's been delayed several times, all on the side of the state, as far as I'm aware. So this response is basically that this has been implemented as of the time of this writing, the inspection has been completed, due in part to the diligence of Yuba County staff overseeing the project. On supervisor salaries, the report was titled Supervisor Salaries, 20 Years Without a Raise. The grand jury, in summary, made a finding that the board are each underpaid by about $20,000 annually, potentially limiting the pool of individuals who can afford to serve as a board member. The recommendation was that the board addressed this issue by October 31st. In response, the recommended response is this recommendation has not yet been implemented but will be by December 31st, 2024. So that just gives a little bit more time for board consideration and for staff to update the salary surveys compared, comparables. And the final item was voter integrity, yea or nay. The board was not required or even invited to respond to this. The clerk recorder, registrar voters did submit a response, which is attached. I should note, the sheriff attached, we have an attached response from the sheriff on the jail report. But on this, basically, the grand jury found through investigating identity verification processes, voter registration system, ballot harvesting clarification, signature verification, and voter rolls, there was no evidence of any irregularities. So there is no official recommended response from the board. As I mentioned, there's a response from the Sutter County clerk recorder, registrar voters attached. So there are no other findings to respond to, however, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any speaker cards? Nope. Any questions from the board?
Yes, to the chair, I just want to say thank you, Steve and staff for doing the responses to all the, to all the grand jury findings. And I really especially would like to give a shout out to the grand jury for the hard work that they put in year after year. This year particularly, the grand jury was very thorough, very fair in their findings, and I just want to give them a shout out for the hard work they do. The appreciation that they get is practically nothing for all of the volunteer hours that they put in, so just giving that appreciation. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to ditto everything Dan said. I, the grand jury has always done an outstanding job, and this year is no exception. Volunteers putting in all these hours, researching all these things, investigating multiple agencies, city, county, school districts, et cetera, cemetery districts, everything, water districts. They have a large role to play in the county, and I give them kudos for that. Thank you. Do we have a motion? No speaker card, right? Okay. Moving on.
Move for approval?
Motion?
Second.
And a second? A roll call?
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Okay, Steve, follow-ups?
Just that Supervisor Ziegemeyer mentioned to me that he is out of the area for work today and regrets that he couldn't be here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, correspondence, we have two items. And if there's no questions on that, we'll go to district reports. Nothing? Okay.
I have nothing to report.
Carm?
Yes, I'd like to request a letter of condolences and something sent out to the families of Ajav Baines and Gramil Delai.
Okay. And I have a couple things. First, Mike asked me to close in memory of Dwight Day, former Sutter County Fire Station Number Six Captain. And I think it should be probably from the full board as well. And then Mary Knapp, 82, of Yuba City, passed away on July 13th, 2024, arranged and entered the direction of Holy Cross Funeral Homes. And last but not least, I'd like to close in memory of Helen Nicholson. She was a beloved wife of Larry Michaels, mother of Catherine Michael, mother-in-law to Cindy Jones, and grandmother to Elena Kama and Jones. And Helen unexpectedly passed away on August 15th, 2024. Helen, after retirement, Helen and Larry traveled extensively, garden profusely. They have like 150 roses in their yard. Helen wrote a novel, No Forgiveness for Children, and a children's book, Great Grandma Shed, Markham Road Follies. Elaine and Helen will chow their memories of old red for years to come. Helen had a deep love of country of Greece. She spent months in Greece and meat, that's her native tongue, and cooked Greek food. No one forget the Greek chicken and potatoes, the way Helen did. Perhaps most importantly, Helen and her family, all best playmates and storytellers for love of Catherine, Elaine, and Kama are commendable. She's a remade mom and grandmother. We strongly wish there had been more time. Helen, hard on September 7th of 2024, 4:30 at 1515 Markham Road will be her party of her life. Sad deal, very sudden death. Treatment for cancer and allergic reaction to medication, apparently. And then last but not least, but a more positive note, this week will be Labor Day. And the Labor Day Parade is in Nicholas as usual every year. Starts out about 7 o'clock with gin fizzes and pancake breakfast. And the parade starts around 10:00. And this benefits the four schools in the area, Markham Pleasant Grove, Browns, and East Nicholas High School. Each school has a booth they run every year and generates a lot of money for the schools. So have a good time if you can go to Nicholas Labor Day Parade. I know the Sheriff's Department will be there, multiple fire trucks and fire departments, et cetera. We have one closed session item, correct?
To the, sorry, to the chair.
Oh, yeah, we got to have a, oh, yeah.
Also, sorry, did you speak Supervisor Flores? I'm sorry. See, I was up in my head, missed the best part of the meeting. I wanted to add just a couple things. At the museum, they now have their 2025 Sutter Buttes calendar available, and it's also their display. So I went to an event Friday, a reception there, was well attended, and despite a lot of competing events that day as well. So please stop into the museum if you get a chance and, and check out all the photos. And then on Saturday, the 7th of September at 8:00 AM is the Second Annual Bridging Hope, a Walk for Suicide Awareness and Prevention. So last year was the first year, it was very successful. Yuba Sutter Behavioral Health puts this on, it will be at the Yuba County Government Center this year, and it's going to walk across both bridges. Last year, I think it went down and back, the Fifth Street Bridge. I think there's going to be a path now that'll discover both bridges. So we're looking forward to attending that and providing support and awareness. Also, I'd like to mention Sarah Eberhart Rios, our Health and Human Service. Also, I'd like to mention Sarah Eberhart Rios, our Health and Human Service, Services Director, held two different all-staff meetings. Because she has such a large amount of staff, she had two separate ones at, at different days and times, held at Boyd Hall and at Feather River Academy, and just did a great job. She's a great leader for the department. People really responded. It was very positive, and it was just more about recognizing everything that her department and her folks do. This wasn't a time for what we could do better, or things like that. It's really just recognizing the great work they do, and mentioned that HHS served around sixty thousand people last year, and it's, it's just well-deserved. Congratulations. Also acknowledged many staff who had earned doctorates and master's degrees and bachelor's degrees and associate degrees, and just was something good that I think really pulled the department together as much as you can when you have such a large department, so I just wanted to say bravo to Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Next, we will need a motion to approve the district reporting and condolences.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
We have motion and second? Roll call?
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. We will now, why don't we take a three-minute recess and then go into closed session?